This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the city council meeting for Tuesday, April 6th. And I would like to call this meeting to order. And I will ask our city reporter, Phyllis Bullman, for the roll call, please.
Counselor Bell.
Here.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Lopez. Counselor McKeel.
Here.
Counselor Oberst.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Salinas Oliveros.
Here.
Mayor Kuntz.
I am present. And for our flag salute tonight, Counselor Carey, can you lead that for us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This evening, we do will entertain public comments. We're on our little different schedule this evening. We're going to try this out. So, public comments will actually come right after our next order of business. So if there is anyone who is interested in making public comment, please know that we will accept those. Try to maintain your comments to three minutes or less. And if you are online and would like to let us know, please go to the chat bubble in the top corner of your screen and type to Phyllis Bullman your name and the topic of your comment. Typically, a speaker's comment is taken under advisement to allow time for the council to review an issue. However, the mayor or counselors may ask the speaker to convey some additional information that addresses their comment. And then also let us know if you'd like any follow-up communication. And I would like to thank everyone for attending this evening. We have some members of some of our other commissions and boards and ad hoc committees with us tonight, I see. And we welcome them as well. So we will start off with our consent agenda. This would be the minutes of a special council meeting that we held on March 9th to review our goals and the council meeting of March 16th. If there are any additions or corrections, please let us know. Otherwise, a motion to approve.
Madam Mayor, I'll move to approve.
Second.
Well, we'll give the motion to Counselor Lopez and the second to Counselor Oliver. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Great. Thank you very much. So, citizen comments. And Phyllis, did anyone send anything in in advance to share with us this evening?
Mayor Kuntz, they did not.
And anybody online wishing to comment?
They didn't send me a chat if they do wish to comment.
Well, not seeing anyone speak up, we'll go forward with our business agenda. And so this evening, we want to start off with a report back from a group that has been meeting and done some amazing work on economic development. This was a task force that was selected and put together last fall, I think, before Marty arrived. And Suzanne Duffner, our community and economic development director, has been leading that work. So I'll turn this over to Suzanne.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Give me just a second. I have a little PowerPoint here to load on the screen. Hopefully, everybody can see that. So, good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Suzanne Duffner, Community Economic Development Director for the city of Monmouth. And I am excited to be here tonight to share with you information about the Monmouth Economic Development Strategic Plan, a five-year plan for economic development. And certainly, welcome to the folks that served on the ad hoc committee for it. I saw some names on the council call. So, thank you for that. So, this economic development has been a council goal for quite some time now. And one of the high priority issues in the 2020 council goal setting was to create this economic development strategy to lead and guide the city's future economic development efforts. So, really pleased to bring forward that draft to you this evening for your review and comments and hopefully ultimately your blessings, so we can move forward on some of these exciting strategies. As the mayor mentioned, we did have a council-appointed ad hoc committee that was created last summer, or I guess September was made official. And this group has been meeting for the past six months, about five different times. And they helped create these various elements of the economic strategy. So, just going to kind of walk through some of the high points. You have a whole copy of the strategy in your packets, but wanted to hit on some of the main themes in that. So, if I can get my slides to advance. Yeah, so I'd mentioned there was an ad hoc committee. We strove for a diverse representation from community and regional economic development partners that represented just a whole variety of backgrounds and interests as they pertain to economic development. And we also had three members of the council that participated in that, as well as city staff from the city manager's office and myself and Jeff with Monmouth Power and Light. The process that we followed was a pretty typical strategic planning process. We really wanted this to be an intensive, focused strategic planning process, so that we could get in and, you know, start working on some of these action items. We will kind of walk through the first steps that we went through here. We took an approach of looking at the community's assets and advantages, comparative advantages that Monmouth has, kind of as the basis for our economic development strategy. This is a very common approach that is taken in small communities of focusing on what we do well and where we have advantages and try to leverage those to, ultimately with economic development, we're trying to create more jobs and expand the city's tax rate and create more wealth to pay for our services and improve our quality of life. So, probably aware of a number of these advantages. Western Oregon University was a huge asset that was recognized and talked about. We'll see throughout the strategies of how do we leverage that asset that the university town brings to us. And that's different and unique about Monmouth than a number of other small rural communities. Certainly, Pacific Highway 99 and all the traffic in the lifeblood transportation access that that provides was also recognized, as was mine, in owning our own power and light facility. So, there's a whole list of those there, but we tried to really keep those in the forefront as we were developing strategies. The Economic Development Planning Committee also developed vision and mission statements for the economic development strategy. The vision statement that was crafted states that we will develop a vibrant and diverse economy that provides a sense of community, pride, and prosperity to all. And the mission statement, charged with helping implement that business, we foster an agile, exceptional, and forward-looking, dynamic local economy that rewards innovation, nurtures financial success, and creates equitable opportunity for prosperity. We are committed every day to supporting those whose talent, investment, grit, and vision drive Monmouth forward. So, a big push for innovation and rewarding those that are doing the hard work to drive our economy forward. As part of this strategy, we recognize that there were a number of kind of cross-cutting principles or overarching areas that we wanted to apply to all of our work as we do economic developments. So, we'll see these listed here as collaboration, equity, inclusion, good communication, and sustainability as our overarching principles that are intended to guide all of our strategies that I'm going to share with you in the next couple of slides. So, to implement the vision and mission statements, the Strategic Planning Committee identified six focus areas. These are, think of these as our goals, kind of broader nature of things that we want to achieve. And then below each one of those, we'll have this more specific strategy that will help us achieve those focus areas or goals. Review each one of those here with you. So, the first focus area looks at investment in and promoting entrepreneurship. So, we know that a lot of new jobs are created from startups and small businesses expanding. And so, looking at ways that we can support partners that may already be providing some of those entrepreneurship services, like Indy Commons and Small Business Development Center, as well as forging new partnerships with the university, again, that has a business school and has computer sciences, very, very different programs that may be able to grow startups and produce new products and services that can be commercialized. So, the great strategies on how do we foster those startup businesses. And you'll see the way that the strategy is laid out. There's a common kind of format to these, each of the focus areas. So, we drill down, identify the strategies, and then we've identified outcomes to help us measure and monitor how well we are implementing these strategies. And then we've also identified, we've recognized that economic development is a team sport and it requires a lot of different partners and coordination. So, we've also have a section that talks about who our partners are that will help us achieve these various strategies. Focus area two relates back to, I was talking about this, asset-based approach to economic development. The focus area two is to use the city's assets to encourage diverse economic growth. And here, we're talking about how do we use those assets such as Highway 99 and the university, our own power and light facilities and services to attract the types of businesses that rely on or need those facilities and those services. So, it's largely what this is, one is focused on. And you'll see there's a little star, a yellow star, on some of the strategies that says STP. And what that is referring to is our short-term priorities. So, recognize that this is a pretty aspirational five-year economic development strategy. And we wanted to identify kind of some of the high priority strategies that we want to hit the ground running. So, in the next year to two years, what are those areas that are super important that will help kickstart and really help drive some of this work and start to see results? So, we spent a bit of time in the committee, ad hoc committee meeting, talking about a strike team. This is a group that will help market and communicate our communities to the outside world and help respond to development inquiries. If there's a new business that wants to come to town or expand, these are the folks that will help us identify how to make those things happen and create that really positive and supportive business finance for our town. The third focus area talks about identifying and preparing for the economy of the future. And these are kind of some of the more traditional strategies that you would think of as the city's more primary role in fostering economic development. So, making sure that we have the infrastructure and the city codes and permitting procedures in place to really support that economic development. And a big piece of that is also our land base and making sure that our economic plans have our up-to-date and have a 20-year supply of land to grow. So, as we try to attract new industry, we actually have a place for them to land and to locate here. So, key partner with this is really trying to make the most out of our remaining years and the urban renewal agency and those investments. Focus area four is focused on developing a vibrant downtown and commercial areas. We know that our downtown is also a wonderful asset that makes us unique and that has a number of businesses that help us be able to shop local and create and foster that quality of life that we enjoy and be able to patron those. And so, this, these sets of, this set of strategies focuses on how to improve the vitality of our downtown and the commercial areas. So, looking at joining the Oregon Main Street Program and, again, using that urban renewal as a way to invest in our downtown, our commercial areas. Focus area five speaks to expanding the economic impact of tourism. So, we recognize that tourism is also one of the complementary strategies of an economic development, well-rounded economic development plan. And we're fortunate to be in Pope County, where we have a number of partners that think regionally and have been, have a great history of working together. There were Tourism Alliance and Shared Tourism Position. So, it is one that we're striving to bring back and be able to market our area. Also recognize that, again, woo, being the important asset that it is with all of the athletic activities and the arts and entertainment, and the new students and parents that come to town. This is another wonderful way to really market our area through tourism and help support a lot of those downtown businesses that we were talking about in the previous strategy. And the last focus area looks at, last but not least, I like to say, this is kind of the engine of most economic development and job growth is through supporting your small businesses that you have and the expansion of those businesses. So, focus area eight is how do we support that small business retention and help them grow and expand? They've already shown their loyalty to locating in Monmouth. But how do we keep them here and have them help us market our area as a great place to live and work and do and open a business? So, these strategies look at identifying the different challenges and barriers that our businesses face and trying to work with them to overcome those. So, it's been a lot of work done in this area and actually have a little presentation later to talk to you a little bit about some of the COVID business assistance that we've been involved in in the past year. So, I do anticipate that that will continue as we try to help our businesses recover from impacts of the pandemic. And then, lastly, the short-term priorities that I mentioned, have these listed out here on the slide. So, looking at getting that strike team engaged and working together to support business attraction in our community and helping market Monmouth's outside worlds. And then also just really focusing on really sound investments in our infrastructure and that will help drive that future economic growth. And looking at streamlining our permitting and review procedures, which we have some of that work already underway with our focus systems project, the Genuity. And in looking at, again, that urban renewal as an incentive disparing additional redevelopment and facade improvements, looking at making sure we provide an adequate land supply and addressing challenges faced by our businesses and joining the Main Street Program were the ones that rose to the top. And I mentioned that we had several meetings with the ad hoc strategic planning committee, but also to get some additional input. We received feedback through the Monmouth Business Association and a survey was sent out to gain additional feedback from local businesses on what they thought were strategic priorities. And then I visited with the university, I'm going to get laughing, probably wrong, but the UCC, University.
Community Connections.
Connections, thank you, Mayor, committee. And they had some really good ideas and feedback to kind of help us sharpen some of those ways to partner and work with better. So, their feedback has also been included in there. And they were also very excited about how to have a work together on some of these items. So, that's pretty much what I had prepared for tonight. Again, the action that we're looking for is any feedback from the council to help finalize the strategy and then hopefully be able to accept that so that we can move forward with implementation as we go through the budgeting process. Stop sharing my screen.
Thanks, Suzanne, for that presentation. And it's really come a long way, looking really nice and fills me with hope for action, hope for long-term planning. Seems like a well-rounded option. Do we have any questions or comments from counsel? Counselor Oberst?
Just a quick, I was wondering about the wayfinding piece. Are we constrained by ODOT on what kind of signs we can put up on 99 and 51? I have a feeling that we, you know, if we wanted to develop a signature sign style or something like that, they would laugh us out of the room, but I don't know that.
Yeah, there is definitely, working on a state highway and ODOT right-of-way jurisdiction issues. Those are challenges that wouldn't have to be overcome. I think, you know, the wayfinding that I've heard about so far, there's kind of been a couple of different ones. One is the big, you know, beautiful arch that may signal to people that are driving down Highway 99 that they turn left, they can see the historic, you know, downtown area and try to draw folks in there. So, to do any kind of projection over ODOT right-of-way would definitely require their support for that. We haven't had, that I'm aware of, that formal conversation, maybe you're aware of in the past, Counselor Oberst, about that. But the other type is also just some smaller wayfinding for, like, a pedestrian, for a more pedestrian-friendly environment of being able to kind of know where some of the key, you know, library parks, theater, some of the businesses on the side streets. So, even had a good idea talking with that UCC community group about a sign that's actually on the corner of, what is it, Hoffman and Riddle Road? That's a county right-of-way that signals to go to Western Oregon University. And what can that say? Also point to historic downtown as well on that sign. And so, county is a, probably a little easier group to work with than, you know, maybe ODOT. So, yeah, I think there's still some options that we should try to explore on that and see how some of the other Main Street communities, that's what excites me. A lot of the people, communities participating in that share ideas, the communities throughout Oregon. So, and they often have highways, right, that go through their Main Street or the same thing. So, I think that's something that we'll be able to explore and be able to answer better.
And just a quick follow-up, I thought about, you know, all the visitors to Western. If we had signs on some of our main routes that said, "This way to the Western Administration Building, this way to the gym, this way to the football field," those would be really valuable to the visitors to the community in addition to, "Where's the post office? Where's the library?" So, those are the things I would like us to look into. If ODOT will allow something big enough for a driver to see, not just like the ones that we have in our sister city that are, you know, perfect for a pedestrian, but driving by is too small to be read.
Yeah, that's a good point. I've heard that comment as well.
Great. Other comments? Counselor Lopez.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Duffner, I wanted to just thank you for the wonderful presentation that you put together. And I just wanted to call attention to that, you see, it's on slide, it looks like eight, key partners section. Because as a community effort, this is something that, you know, I think, I very much look forward to the city taking the lead in, but I very much want to stress the value of the relationships with our community partners listed here. And really look forward to, look forward to seeing this be implemented throughout our community to the benefits of everyone, new and existing businesses and new and existing residents alike. So, look down that key partners list. If it was me, I'd throw that on the first page there. And I very much look forward to, look forward to seeing some of these relationships develop even more.
Yeah, thank you. We could definitely make that another page to gather all those, just as we did the STPs. And Counselor Carey.
One of the, there's a couple of things that I would sort of add. One of the things that we went through kind of quickly, and it's in the text, if you read it closely, the ad hoc committee is interested in the council or in the agency considering the possibility of extending the life of this. There's a lot to that. There's, you know, there's arguments for and against. But so, there may be a time when that would come to the agency for consideration. And the rationale and logic was, is we sort of got, you know, we sort of went through several years where we didn't really do a lot because there were other things on the table. And so, just be conscious of that. And the other thing is, is we want, we wanted to infuse throughout all of, not only city government, but the council and others, a sense of this, so we can all be supportive of business retention, business expansion. We are all sort of thinking about how we can be business-friendly. So, the more familiar we can become with a final document, the more conversant we'll be and the more helpful we can be in supporting all of these different initiatives.
It's a great point, Counselor Carey, and reminds me of the discussions that we had about the strike force. We saw that as kind of a fluid body. So, if there is an expert in one area or somebody that has connections in the community, that we'd be able to pull that person in and, you know, we certainly need those cheerleaders to help show how, I mean, you know how wonderful our community is, but to be able to tell that story to others. So, it's really good.
Great. Let's see any other questions? Counselor Oberst?
So, sort of tailing off John's notion of extending this body's life. I think one thing that could be looked at is that there's lots of different ways to structure an economic development body. It can be part of city government, it can be not part of city government with perhaps city government representation present. There's advantages and disadvantages both ways. It's worth exploring some structures if we want to try to keep a body going. I would strongly favor some form of Economic Development Commission body, whatever, to attend to the details of this report, which is amazing, frankly. And I'm really excited to see this stuff. A lot of these ideas have gone by before, but I don't think they've been organized quite as strongly as this particular document has put it all together. I want to thank all those here present, who are members of this body for your hard work, because this is good, really, really good stuff and a lot of food for thought on that. And I want to, you know, extend, I'll just speak for council just this once and extend our appreciation for your hard work.
Yeah, thanks. I did want to point out, we do have a couple of members that were with us throughout this process. And Eric Olson and Alex Poraskovas are with us this evening. Kathleen Mason, our chamber director, all had a hand in this. So, I do want to shout out to them. And if they had any comments or observations to share, I'll give you a minute to do that as well.
I think not too much to share, but I appreciate being involved. And I'm really excited to start the work, to be perfectly honest. I think the state has just unveiled sort of an innovation plan, like a 10-year innovation plan, talking about innovation hubs. And I'm really excited to sort of take a regional approach to economic development and to build multi-layered approach. So, and sorry, I didn't introduce myself. I'm Alex Poraskovas. I work for SED-COR. We're a regional economic development organization, so.
Yes, and Kathleen.
Yes, hi there. I was so proud that.
Yes, hi there. I was so proud that Chamber West to be part of this group. And Suzanne, again, as usual, beautiful job of putting everything together. Thank you so much. I just want to state that there are a couple of different places in the development plan that maybe the Chamber could really play a strong role going forward and that might be perhaps part of the strike team because there are board members and members that I think could be very, very strong parts of this team going forward. We might also be able to assist in the Main Street project or program or any of those efforts also too. And and I think that's all I had. So, oh, and continue to support Monmouth and help to represent Monmouth as we are involved in the Pope County Tourism Alliance. So and of course, a lot of this will depend on my successor, but I have no doubt that person's going to be very energetic and full of new ideas and be a great team player for all of you too. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. All right. Thank you for that Suzanne, I appreciate that. And we have another informational item and I will let Marty Wine introduce this next item. Should have gotten materials about this in your package, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we have just a discussion item for you. We wanted to bring you developing potential partnership that was proposed in 2020 last year. We're looking for council discussion and guidance tonight about the Bird Electric Scooter Company, who's expressed a desire to join our community and bring their pilot fleet to operate here in Monmouth. What we, we don't need specific direction, we're just wanted to hear from the council, any questions or concerns about the company's operation in Monmouth? We have a representative, Kate Schumacher, who's here from Bird tonight, who wants to give you a brief presentation and tell you a little bit about the way Bird might operate in our city. And we know that whatever form of agreement or potential code amendments that we would be looking at for Bird's operation, we'd need to put together an agreement for that to work. So wanted to just have a chance for you all to know about this potential, this potential proposal and also hear back from you about concerns you have. But I'd like to first introduce Kate and ask ask Kate if she'd like to say a few words about Bird. And we sent you some information ahead of time so you could maybe get some of your questions answered through the information Kate sent ahead of time. So Kate, welcome.
Thank you for that and Mayor and Council, thank you for having me. Bird is really interested and exciting in coming to Monmouth. Bird, I'm a territory manager, so help to oversee expansion through the West Coast. And with our new expansion plan this year in 2021, we're really focused on similar-sized cities, so really kind of approaching small to mid-sized cities across the US. And kind of, I guess, first off, what Bird is, is we're the first and original dockless micro-mobility vehicle sharing company. So our city is to get, our mission is to get more cities, make cities more livable and bring communities together by providing affordable and environmentally friendly transit options. So Bird scooters are used in that one-mile to four-mile on average length of trip, typically to get to and from businesses, schools, to and from, if you're getting an oil change and need to pop around town. We see that this helps to increase spontaneous spending. So people stopping in stores, ultimately helping with parking and helping ultimately to give everybody a fair shot and option on an alternative form of transportation if you don't own a bike or if your car is not available that day. So how this works, users will download the Bird app. You'll find the Bird on the app like you see in that picture. You'll walk to that location and there will be a Bird scooter sitting there. We're going to have them dispersed throughout the city in groups of two or three. You'll then scan that QR code on the Bird that will unlock the vehicle. You'll kick off, give it a good little ride. Once you'll ride them in the bike lanes and just like you'd ride a bike, they really function pretty much very similarly. And then once you're done with the ride, you'll end that ride and be able to park it where you'd like. These vehicles are dockless, so it really creates that flexibility that people need to be able to leverage these and use them as they wish. And so our proposal is to come to Monmouth with 50 Bird vehicles. We would have one fleet manager and we'd look to launch hopefully by May 1st if all approval was done by then. Before that launch date, we would though, we do want to partner together. So we would make sure that we have proper paperwork in order. We'd also introduce an account manager who will be your main point of contact and will reiterate all of the important points, be very proactive and making sure that we enter to make sure this is a smooth transition and that we're also have that partnership so that we can be there to really support and integrate scooters properly into into your city. So would love to hear from any questions that you may have or concerns with the business model and take it from there.
Great, thank you. And I'm sure we'll have a couple of questions. So we will start with Counselor Oberst.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So when I think about a four-mile ride around here, I wind up in Independence somewhere. Are you all looking at working with them as well? That's my first question. My second observation, we had a bike share program in town for a while and it was particularly popular with students on Friday and Saturday nights when they would ride home from their entertainment venues and drop the bike off a block or two from home and just leave it lying by the side of the road in somebody's front yard. And so that became particularly in certain parts of town, a problem around apartment complexes in particular, and just wondered what your all's approach to a thing like that might be. I think that's all I have right now.
Perfect. So great questions. To answer your first question, yes, we are approaching the city of Independence and would love to get their approval as well. Until we have the approval of them, we do have geo-fencing opportunities. So we will be able to just create an operating zone right over the area that we're allowed. That also allows you to restrict areas. So if you are having a Fourth of July parade or there's a farmer's market and you want us to create a little no-ride zone where the scooters don't work or they slow down, we can do that temporarily or permanently. We do have a lot of control on where the scooters are able to operate. To answer your second question about the hours of operation, we do put hours of operation from 4:00 AM to 12:00 PM. We can change those hours of operation. So if you find that that issue is still a problem, we can always shorten the hours of operation or edit it as we partner. We also make sure that things, we have a very sophisticated approach to this. One of that is going to be working with a fleet manager who is local within the community. They are going to see where all of the birds are at all times. They're also then going to see when those birds get dropped off in places like neighborhoods, back alleyways, and we'll go and pick those up and bring them back to the original destinations. So the vehicles, even if they're parked elsewhere, are going to end up getting back into the normal areas. We do have a ton of tricks up our bag about helping people to park appropriately. So we can create no park zones if that's something that is really an issue in a certain area. We also educate riders. So we have them take a picture of where they parked and show them how to park. We ask them to park certain ways. We also can give discounts if they park appropriately. So when it comes to kind of the idea of parking and making sure they're parked properly, we have a lot of ways to address that and we'll kind of enter with our understanding of what some concerns are, but be ready that maybe that'll be a concern, maybe something else will be, just like if a dog's chewing, you know, if you're trying to train your dog, you're really focused on how do I get it to sit? And then it starts chewing a shoe and you're like, oh my gosh, I need to pivot and address that issue. We're going to be very, very reactive and very, you know, strong partners to help with anything that does come up.
Funny analogy.
Well, sometimes, you know, you gotta give the dog a little cookie to make him stop doing it. We give riders discounts. It's like a little cookie and they like it.
Good. Other questions or comments? And I want to thank Roxanne Belts, of course. Whenever it's a transportation issue, she's our go-to first connection. So Counselor Belts first started talking this through with Kate, getting the general idea before we kind of vetted it up and appreciate your support and expertise there because your job is to get people connected to alternative forms of transportation. We also know that this is a little bit sensitive because of the prior problems with the model that we had before and a lot of complaints. And I think if I recall with that system, there was actually more than one person who was responsible for sort of collecting wayward scooters and those were even that sort of group of people, many of whom were volunteers admittedly, I think, had trouble keeping up with all the complaints about where things were dropped. So I know that would be a bit sensitive in both communities.
Yeah, absolutely. And we do have a different performance metrics that that fleet manager has to abide by in order to keep that position under contract with us. So we do monitor their performance and hear your feedback that if they, you know, we aren't seeing the performance needed, we'll find someone else. But we typically do a very, very thorough job of sourcing, training that specific fleet manager. And we have a ton of different tools and visibility like heat maps. So Roxanne will be able to leverage all of our information that we're getting on like heat maps and activity throughout the city to see, oh wow, like this area is actually really active. And so you'll be able to see firsthand really what the impact and usage is. And it'll really speak for itself on how and where people are using them.
Counselor Carey.
In your other, in your current active locations, do you have any data on compliance with proper parking? If there's like a designated area, if you have some, you know, marking, I think part of the problem with the last deal we had was, is it was, yeah, well, park it anywhere, you know, the dockless, you know, put it where you want. And they did. And I'm guessing there's going to be a fair amount of, you know, university use originating trips at the university and returning. I'm sure they would be interested in, you know, sort of consolidating a parking zone. And, you know, whether there's a penalty involved for bad parking or a reward for good parking, that's up to you. But that's going to be really the issue, I think. So if there's anything there that we could do on our end that would improve compliance, it would be, we'd like to know that, I think.
Yeah, absolutely. There are a few things that you can do. And another funny analogy for you is back in the day, there was horse-drawn carriages, then we introduced automobiles into society and there was a period of time where it was a little bit of chaos. They didn't know how to properly integrate things into society. And so the same thing with scooters, we saw in the early days, there were some kinks we had to work through. Bird was the first ones to drop these on the roads and we've spent a lot of money and forward-thinking, how do we make this work and integrate into society? Because if it doesn't properly, then the business model just really doesn't work. And those core values that we're trying to change aren't able to happen. So when it comes to parking, we do suggest as needed to put in parking corrals, which will just be, there's, you can either have something physical or you can just have spray painted a picture of kind of like a parking space. We can then, within the app, put little pins that go over those parking locations. So the riders are notified when they drive the scooters. Here's some of the parking destinations. We can turn on like a parking incentive that if they park, and we can tell by like the GPS and geo-zoning, if they park within that zone. If they park within that zone, we can say you get 25 cents off your next ride. Just like the dog analogy, again, maybe we give them the 25 cents a few times and then we stop that, but they'll continue to park in that area because they just know that they're supposed to. So there's a few different ways that we'll work with it. You can start without that and then we can always add if we see that that's a problem. So it kind of is a flowing model or we can start with that. And that'll be something that we discuss in the pre-launch and kind of strategy meeting.
Counselor Selena Soliveros and then Counselor McKeel.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So Ms. Schumacher, I do have a few questions, but I will keep it to a minimum to allow others to ask questions. First of all, I want to know, what's your longest time that, in a city, like your success rate? And is there a minimum amount of uses? And do you come back to reevaluate if this is something that's working in the community or not? And then decide to stay or not stay? So do you have that type of information?
Yeah, great question. So the minimum fleet size would be a fleet of 50 birds. We have that active in towns as small as about 5,000 in population. So I do think that that fleet size is going to be a terrific amount for your community. I also think that there's not all the time that all of the vehicles are going to be out. We'll watch the demand. So we'll see, we want a lean and effective fleet. So we'll watch the demand rates and see that we're getting roughly around two to three rides per day per vehicle is good. So if we're seeing about 100 rides a day on a fleet of 50, then that'll suffice and be effective for us. And to your first question, we've been in some markets for the full four years. A lot of the initial cities that we launched in were the large cities like the Austin, the LA, you know, the big warm climate, obvious cities for these modes of transportation. With this new fleet manager model, it's allowed us to operate differently and is working fantastic. We've rolled this out across all of our major markets and all of the new markets in over past 2020 and in 2021. And so that's why we're able to sustain a smaller fleet and kind of a farther city that isn't, doesn't have a bird service center directly in it.
Great, thanks. And Counselor McKeel and then Counselor Lopez, I saw you also had your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks actually, Ms. Schumacher, for coming to the council. I love this idea. I think your metaphor might be a little off though about talking about automobiles and horses because it'd be more like rent a horse or rent an automobile and then they just left it in the middle of the road. So so, but I totally understand the idea of expanding how we think of things. So I like that. You did mention that there was a parking place, more than maybe the strips of, you know, paint on the ground, but an actual place where they have to park. I've seen the rent-a-bikes in Washington DC, they're ubiquitous, but always what they have is a corral where they, in order to leave the bike, you have to put it someplace. And I think that would help a lot.
So that is the docked model. And a docked model has a docking station where a rental electric micro-mobility vehicle would be placed at a dock and rented from a docking station. We see that that actually, that was available before Bird came around. We see that it significantly kind of kills the demand and the usage of the vehicles because that one to four miles is because that one to four miles is really required for flexibility. So getting you to and from a bus stop to your parked car somewhere and having that convenience and reliance that you can get directly where you're trying to go. Because if, imagine you're somewhere and you rent a bird to get back to your, your car, you don't know where a parking docking station is and then you're stuck with this vehicle and it's charging you money and it can be really overwhelming. So there is a, a kind of a reason to why we, we don't, you know, do docking stations. And that is Bird's business model to, to have them dockless and suggest parking locations and rebalance them ourselves.
Oh, and I'm sorry, I, just a follow-up question. I thought that the app provided where the parking docking, the docking place would be. So.
Yes. So the, the, the app will suggest where like suggested parking spaces are. So it's always going to be a suggestion on whether or not you want to park in that area. You maybe get a discount or maybe you're just a good citizen following the rules, parking in the suggested parking zones. And people like following rules are most people. So the suggested parking in the app is just going to be a suggestion. And then our fleet manager is going to supplement that. And anybody that doesn't park there, they're going to go around and pick those up and re-put them back in those suggested areas.
Thank you. So this at least might decrease the amount of errant birds out there.
Yes, and we do get alerts when they're being moved and they're supposed to be parked. That signals that maybe someone's dragging it out of its place or there's something funky happening with it. So there's a bunch of different types of alarms that alert us to make sure that we're managing it properly.
Thank you.
Counselor Lopez and then another quick one, Counselor Oberst, and we'll move forward.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and thank you very much, Ms. Shoemaker. I, I'm excited that you're here speaking with us tonight. I, you know, I, I love that your, your focus is through answering, answering some of the existing or the previous issues through incentives, but remaining flexible enough to serve the, the, the community needs as they, they are. You know, as, as an individual that's utilized both, you know, bicycles and scooters in, you know, in similar formats to this, when there is a corral format where everything goes back to one spot, I'll, I'll be honest with you and I'll be honest with other counselors, I've not used them as much. And it really, it, it really, to an extent, almost defeats the purpose. I mean, I, I have a bike at home and if I'm going somewhere in town, you know, well, what's, what's to say I'm not just going to utilize that bike? But I do see myself as utilizing, utilizing this. And I think a lot of, a lot of members of our community will because of that flexibility. So I'll remind everyone that this flexibility is, is a, a feature, not an, an issue. I, you know, I, I would like to point out that this dovetails very well with the number of our council priorities and values that we'll be speaking about later tonight. Amongst them are, you know, are climate, climate issues, sustainability, making a walkable and, you know, a community that focuses on active transportation. And this is a, a huge piece in this. And so with, with that and my interest in seeing this, seeing this succeed, I'm sure that you're familiar with, you know, with some of the, the previous ventures that have been similar to this in the past in our community. Some of the issues that arose, but despite those issues, they, I, I don't believe that it ended because of those issues. I believe that it ended because of other things going on to those companies and they, they, they had to pull out of the community. So my, my question to you after that long, long duration is what's your commitment to us in terms of, in terms of time? You, you talked a little bit about your benchmark of, you know, of what would make it make sense for, you know, for Bird. But how long are you going to give it to see if it makes sense? Especially in the, the climate that we have now with, you know, with, without people being out is about perhaps as much as they have been in the past.
Great question. We want to make it successful. We really only put resources into going places that we think are going to be successful. So there was layers of approval before I even did outreach to approach your city as an option. And there has been a few meetings since starting conversations to double check that. So we absolutely plan to come. I understand that a lot of other micro mobility companies saw, oh, Birds doing something cool and they're making money. Like we can do that too. It's not as easy as that. It really does take a lot of focus, attention and a ton of resources into advancing the hardware, the software to make it profitable per ride and then profitable per city. And so it's taken us a long time to be able to get to the point of entering into new communities. And that's why we've waited till now to enter. And I can tell you, our expansion plans across the US are very expansive in this upcoming year because of it. And so we're doing very well as, as a company. And I think you'll see some hopefully big news in the, the coming year with Bird.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
And Counsel Oberst, you had sort of a last thing and we will kind of give, count, give our staff direction about whether or not to move forward on this.
Two cities, one fleet manager or two?
Probably one. The fleet manager can typically manage up to 100 birds. And if they're really great, then we give them more than that, but they have to prove themselves to get up to that.
So I saw photos early on in the rent a bike phenomenon, piles of abandoned bikes. When bikes would leave cities, bike companies would leave cities and the bikes weren't worth their time to collect and it was left for the city to figure out what to do with them. Have you had any failed markets and if so, what becomes of the scooters? I can imagine being too valuable to just ditch like that.
One of our core values is sustainability. We are aimed to reducing carbon emission and creating a more sustainable environment. And part of that is properly making sure that we don't leave vehicles abandoned, whether they're dropped in streamways or left anywhere. We want to make sure that we properly dispose of them. So absolutely, we do not leave vehicles anywhere. We, we track them down.
Okay. And then finally, for Acting Chief Haynes, any concerns from the police side on this proposal? I know I just probably pulled Isaiah up short because he wasn't expecting to be called on. If he doesn't have anything, that's fine.
I don't know if my camera is going to work here. I, I don't think there's any concerns, you know, I think that there was some issues previously with the bikes. But I will say that, you know, we didn't field too many complaints. Usually those were put back to the manager, the fleet manager to deal with. And so I think from a police perspective, I don't think that there's a whole lot of issues for us.
Thanks. Perfect. That was sort of what I thought.
My grandkids might come and visit me more if we have these. So I, I'm in favor of this. So.
I'm seeing nods. I don't hear of any grave concerns about moving forward, continuing to explore this. And obviously, if it would be, it'll be helpful if we get Independence also interested since some of the places people want to go are over there. Having that hard stop at right before Wincow and you have to get out and walk to Wincow and back to your bike because it doesn't cross the city line or to Circle K. So we will, or Les Schwab, I guess, for that matter. If you've got that oil change that Kate talked about, so.
If you have a referral to the city of Independence or to a fleet manager, we would love that to expedite process as well.
Great. We will direct our city manager to speak with their city manager tomorrow when she's talking about some other joint issues and see if that is something they would like to explore as well. So.
I think we ought to scoot this project along.
Scoot it along. Probably not for a May start, I think, looking at some of the issues there. But I, I think it will be, and you know, our college students aren't here, right? We hope they will be returning in the fall and hopefully we'll have everything running smoothly by then, if we can keep it moving forward. So. Thank you, Kate. Marty will be in touch.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is an action item and we will call upon Janet Chinard, our Finance Director. One of these technicalities we need to take care of every so often and Janet will introduce this for us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, honorable council members. We are looking at doing a supplemental budget, if you are so inclined. It is not required that we do the supplemental budget for when we take on additional debt during a year. However, it does make for transparency of reporting and in particular for the debt issuance costs, which are not small. That is very helpful and because we have a debt service payment as well under the new 2021 MyNet refunding bonds that we did in February. As I was recording those costs, I thought I, I had better go ahead and do a supplemental budget. So all that to say, as you know, we, we had some very nice savings from those bonds in the order of $800,000. And so this just, as I said, sort of wraps it up with a bow to make sure that when we record them, the appropriations match up. So with that, I would take any questions you have.
It looks pretty simple. Are we ready to entertain a motion?
We are. There is a proposed motion in your pack.
I move to adopt resolution number 1915, a resolution to authorize a supplemental budget in the MyNet Fund for Resources and Unforeseen Costs from the 2021 Debt Refunding.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor McKeel for the motion and Counselor Lopez for the second. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Roll call.
Oh, roll call, sorry, resolution. I was just going to say that. So. Go ahead, Phyllis.
Counselor Oberst.
I'm still yes.
Counselor McKeel.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Belts.
Aye.
Counselor, Counselor Salinas Oliveros.
Yes.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janet.
Yep. Motion passes six zero and resolution number 1915. Thank you very much for that. All right. And back to Suzanne. She mentioned earlier that she has a report prepared for us on the incredible work that she has been doing in the last year to assist our businesses to really try to bring the, all the resources that have been made available and help folks navigate that. So thank you, Suzanne.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Mayor, for that introduction. And this is just a short informational report for the council to, to provide an overview of the various programs and services that the city has been involved in providing to our hardest hit businesses that have been impacted by various public health restrictions on, on business operations. So I was really surprised as I totaled this up over what it's been the past year. And it, we've just spent almost $171,000 on various programs. And that's not counting, you know, the staff time and effort. So I'm really happy that we've been able to work with such strong partners to, to deliver those services. So I just wanted to give like a quick highlight to, to share some of those, those programs with you. The first thing that really happened when all of this was evolving is that we turned to our partners. So just like we talked about an economic development strategy, the importance of reaching out and establishing those relationships and really working with our economic development partners to leverage each other's strengths and identify what the business needs are and work in a more coordinated fashion. As there was so much information that was coming down so quickly. So that I am really proud that we were part of this COVID-19 Business Recovery Team that met and helped kind of create the programs that we were going to work on and work towards serving our businesses to identify those needs. And one of the first things that we did was purchase PPE. That was kind of one of the, if you'll recall back to that crazy, how valuable hand sanitizer was and how hard it was to find gloves and masks as this was all rolling out. So we quickly worked with our partners to identify that as a need and were able to make purchase of those supplies and develop the partnership with the Monmouth Independence Chamber of Commerce with Kathleen Mason. She recognized that she had the office space and, and was able to help us get that distributed to, to the businesses. And so that was, that was something that we heard from our businesses and nonprofits, both that they were very thankful for that. We also partnered with the chamber and the Monmouth Business Association to create a coordinated front on wearing of masks, kind of back when it was first coming out. And there was some resistance from, you know, not most, but that still of just trying to get a united front from our businesses that we supported the, the mask requirement. And so I think one of the neat things the business association put together was taking photos of our local businesses wearing, owners wearing masks. And then we had the screen printing company here locally that put that poster together, made it available in both Spanish and English and helped distribute those throughout the community and the businesses to post. And so the city helps provide some funding for the printing of those, those posters. As I mentioned, communication was an important feature early on. And just as so much information was coming down the pipeline and, and businesses were overwhelmed on, on the new requirements and what resources were available. So the city coordinated efforts with the business association and the chamber to make sure that we had a, a pipeline to deliver that information and sift through it and try to find the most relevant and important items for business owners to know about. So the, the business association did a great job. They reached out to everybody. You didn't have to be a member or pay dues or play favorites. It was just get the information out as widely as possible. So we had built up a really great email list serve distribution to be able to share that information out through our networks. As part of that, there was also a COVID dining guide that was put together, letting folks know which businesses were open and what services they could provide, whether it be takeout or delivery services. That was initially on the city website and then we were able to migrate that to a new business association website that's pictured on the screen. And that was also one of the projects that we were able to, to develop with a little grant from the For Family Foundation and some of our COVID dollars to be able to recognize how important it was to communicate not only internally, but also externally to our customers and let folks know what businesses were still open and available. So it's a great new resource that we have that has a business directory and all sorts of fun things that you can do and activities and events in downtown. One of the very big favorites of the businesses was the grant support that rolled out. So we kind of had two main ones that the city was a sponsor and involved in. One was the Business Oregon Grant Program and that was back in late spring, early summer, where we partnered with Independence and received some grant monies from Business Oregon, from the state, to be able to make seven grant awards to Monmouth businesses. These are businesses that met certain qualifying requirements for COVID impacts to, to income. And then we did a, a second grant program with some of our CRF Corona Relief Funds later in the, the fall, I believe it was. And we awarded $78,000 in grants to 25 businesses and nonprofits that were heavy hit by, by COVID. And we did this work with the help of the Blommer Works Partnership, kind of established a niche in doing these, these types of grants. So a picture there of our local B and B managers. But Eli and Emily that were able to take advantage of those funds and we're very grateful. The technical assistance program, I won't say much here because you've had a nice presentation from Kate Sportslar with the Indie Idea Hub. She came in and talked to you, if you recall, about the program that we provided some of our CRF dollars to help provide one-on-one assistance to 12 of our Monmouth businesses. And I think it developed a really great model that we're going to see if, you know, if we can find additional funds to help keep that program available and, and get other businesses involved to benefit from that. Some of the, the fun promotional activities that we did were kind of around the, the holiday seasons. Holidays look a lot different when we were at the socially distanced and, and stay home. But we worked with the, the Chamber and the Independence Downtown Association, Monmouth Business Association to still try to make those times special and also help support drive shop local campaigns to support our local businesses. So some fun activities around Mother's Day and the holidays. And then also the mayor did a nice shop local for the holidays proclamation to, to help support that. So it's involved making some free advertising for those businesses available through our community notes inserts and also through the profile. Pay for some advertising there. Another assistance that we provided, it didn't necessarily have a dollar amount tied to it, but heard from the owner of Fresh Wine Bar that it really helped them through a very difficult time as seating capacity was severely restricted and times that we couldn't actually indoors, but we could still eat outside and in Oregon in the wintertime, which is, you know, sure, we'll all look back and, and think of how interesting those, those times were. But city was able to restrict some of our regulations to allow for businesses to provide some extra seating capacity so that they're able to still have patrons come to their businesses. So I had people setting out sidewalk cables and, and also taking up a few parking spaces on the streets that we had jurisdiction on. This is not, we can't do that on the ODOT. Main Street isn't ODOT Highway, but this pictured here is Warren Street. We do have jurisdiction over that as a local street. And then just lastly, one that we kind of wound down not too long ago that was again very popular was the Love Local, the Shop Local Utility Credit Program where folks could spend $20 at a local business and get a $10 credit on their utility bill. Just some quick stats on that. We had 161 utility account holders participate in that. And that leveraged over $14,000 worth of spending at local businesses just in the month of February alone. And the receipts that we received came from 39 different local businesses. So put a couple of quotes on here from, we received so many positive comments through our Facebook, through the emails of people sending in the receipts. And the businesses themselves noticed an uptick in retail spending and they attributed it to this program. So I really appreciate our utility providers that were able to help make that, that possible. So we're, no, there's no rest for the weary. We have, there's still businesses that are recovering and we're still trying to figure out ways that we can create ways that we can help them moving forward. But yeah, I think it's just a testament to what great partners that we have and, and all the activities that we've been able to accomplish by working with them. So yeah, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about those programs if you have any.
And I, I have one comment. I was recently in the grain station and Jeff Gloat, the owner, who of course owns a restaurant also in McMinnville, but also had, just at the very beginning of this, closed his restaurant in Salem. And he told me that he was extremely grateful to be in Monmouth and have that as a primary place of business throughout this. He, he said, explained how wonderful the city was, how great everybody was to work with and how he was really, really grateful that if he had to go through this as a businessman, he was able to do it in Monmouth. So that is absolutely a testament to Suzanne and all the partners she worked with to develop these programs. And I, I think, thank you for that, Suzanne. Other comments or, yes, Counselor McKeel?
Yeah, I, I just want to also say my thanks to Suzanne. And I'm wondering, you can't track this with your numbers, but I know that I had an uptick in the number of businesses that I intentionally went to during that time, but then didn't send in any receipts. So I, I would expect that there might be even more people out there like that who participated. So nice, nice brainchild there, Suzanne.
Yeah, and I, I can't take the credit for that. This is, other communities have done this and, and it was the support of all the, the city staff and Chamber jumped in and helped us with the advertising. So yeah, definitely a team, team effort and so proud to be able to work with the, the fine folks that we have to make these things happen.
All right. No other questions? We'll go ahead and move on. Thank you, Suzanne. Thanks very much for that. I am, we've, we've got our, our value statement discussion. We have our quick reports and then we will be moving to our Urban Renewal Agency Session. We will temporarily adjourn council, become the Urban Renewal Agency Board. And when that board finishes its business, we do have an executive session item this evening. So that's kind of the progression of, of how we're going to go. I am wondering if now is a good time for a break? If we could take just about five minutes before we start this next discussion? And just take a quick one and we'll be right back. All right. Thank you, everyone, for returning. And we'll go ahead and continue on with our agenda. With the next item, again, just additional discussion about our goals and our overarching statements that we've been working towards. And I, I think we're getting close on those. So we'll kind of let Marty review the work she has done since our last meeting.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I actually don't have very much to present tonight, but I tried to produce for your packet tonight, revised and updated draft that was reflective of your last conversation about the value statements that grew out of your February or your January priority setting and your subsequent discussion about creating overarching values that guide what we do. I, I brought you both the council priorities for the upcoming fiscal year and just letting you know that we're using these still and now to create a budget proposal that's reflective of these priorities. So, but I brought you both, both of these tonight because it's, it represents sort of like the direction that we'd be going forward in the future. So really my hope is that tonight you can discuss and potentially reach consensus on these, on these value statements and what you want them to say. And as I said in the first mashup draft that I offered you, I don't have any pride of authorship. I think the goal here is for the seven of you to have a conversation about what you want these value statements to say and how they can best reflect, you know, how you want to present these as yours going forward. So that's all I've got, just to launch you off into discussion tonight. I'm sure that, that the draft I provided isn't going to hit the mark and you'll probably have some comments and ideas about things that you'd like to change. So I'd like to hear your, your direction about that in your discussion tonight.
Great. I would like to say if, if, if we can approve the goals, right? I, I know the, there's been very little wordsmithing on those. I really think those well captured our discussion. I, I would entertain a motion to adopt the goals and priorities that we have so that those can officially be tied to the budget work that's being done. And then continue to talk about our value statements. This is a really new process for us and, and I'm okay if we continue to work on that wording because I don't see those changing a lot in future years necessarily. So I'm wondering what, what the, what folks feel about that process? Good. I, to get that on the record then, I would entertain a motion about the council priorities for fiscal year 2022 as presented, if anyone had any changes or comments before moving those forward. Yes, Counselor Oberst?
So I am very impressed with this document. There are a few spots that give me a little heartburn, nothing that would, a relays wouldn't take care of. With one exception, and that is, I'm being Joe Citizen and I look at this document and I see it as a prioritized list of this is the most important thing, this is the second most important thing, et cetera. When I look at the community engagement and communications, my sense of things is that this group has felt really strongly that the city does not communicate well with its community. And we have talked about adding a communication staff position to talk to, you know, as it says here, residents, businesses in the city of Monmouth and the region. A really wide net to try to up our communications game. And in fact, considering hiring a staff position to do that. As this is laid out, what I would see as Joe Citizen is the most important thing is to talk to the, the underserved groups and then we'll get around to talking to everybody else later. The only change I would make in this document, the only change would be to swap 1A and 1B and the order in which they appear. Other than that, I'm 100% on board with it.
Okay. About that? I think a communications plan obviously drives everything else. So there's certainly value in putting that first with special emphasis on these other processes.
That's how I was seeing it, Madam Mayor, was we can't do A until we get B or we can do them at the same time, but we certainly would want to make sure that we've got B rolling as we engage A. So I would really like to see, you know, when we go to Budget Committee, if, if this serves to inform the Budget Committee, I think it's important we say, yeah, we want to add a staff position, we want to add a staff position to do a communications plan, part of which would be dot, dot, dot. So that, that's just, you know, again, I, I see it, we know the sausage making that's gone into this thing.
Okay.
Those folks don't. You know, so I just, that's, that's all, that's right.
Yep, thanks. Counselor Salinas Oliveros, did you have a comment before Counselor Lopez?
Yes, for me, I, I kind of see A and B as just encompassing the whole community engagement piece. It isn't going to make or break my decision if we switch A and B. I think they're both equally important and I think that's what we're trying to emphasize. I'm, I'm going to try not to worry so much about, you know, whoever looks at the, because I think, one, we're not going to please everybody, but two, it, it will give us opportunities to have conversations and to, with our community as well. So even if we get those questions, I view it as an opportunity to communicate what our priorities, our values and our ideals are.
Thank you. Counselor Lopez?
Yes, thank you. And, um, you know, I'd, I'd like to speak to, um, speak to Counselor Oberst's suggestion of moving 1A and 1B and swapping those. You know, that, that doesn't give me any heartburn at all because I, I never viewed this as a ranked list. And I do understand the optics of it and, you know, and needing to make sure that we get communications plan and wanting to stress the, the, the importance of that potential role because that will dovetail into literally everything that we're doing here. But, but, but I also would like to stress to our community and, and to, you know, staff members. would like to stress to our community and and to, you know, staff members that are are taking this as, you know, direction in the, you know, future budgeting and planning processes, that that this is, this is not, in my view, and I, I think I can speak with relative safety for most of the other council, that this is not necessarily a ranked list. We're not saying that, you know, 1A is more important than, you know, 2B or or anything along those lines. So if 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 it looks better and reads better to swap those, I, you know, I can get behind it absolutely. So there you have it.
Great, thanks. Any other sections that folks didn't understand or wanted to make sure that there was sort of more of a point to? Counselor Carey?
Um, I'm generally good with this. And John, with your suggestion, it's fine. Is, are we done with this at this point and then just work off of of it? You know, as I looked at it more in more detail, you know, we've got in what is currently 1A, you know, we got that listing that Counselor Lopez didn't like, you know, the fact that there's a list, which, you know, because you always leave somebody out. You know, WOU is a pretty big entity for only one line and three letters. Is that faculty? Is that students? Is that staff? Is that the administration? Physical plant, the, the cabinet? Because that's where articulation comes. It's not enough for me to say to vote no on something like this, but if there's an opportunity to tease that out a bit more post-approval, we might be able to make it more meaningful.
Okay, thank you, John. Rebecca and then Chris.
Madam Mayor, I would like to step in for a moment really quick just to correct, correct the record. I never said anything about not liking that list. In fact, I've been a huge proponent of of having the BIPOC community, underserved communities, people with disabilities, WU, youth, et cetera, being explicitly listed. So I would just like to correct that for the record. I believe that Counselor Carey was thinking of a different counselor.
He was thinking of me. How he got the two of us mixed up, Chris, I'll never know.
My brother from from another family there.
Counselor Salinas Oliveros.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Maybe if we, what Counselor Carey was talking about, we could possibly add, you know, WU community or Western Oregon University community to get, you know, the faculty, staff and student. I think it's the entire university that we are talking about. You know, yes, we want to focus on our students, but our staff and faculty also come into the community engagement. But we could, and then we could even put MI youth or Monmouth Independent Youth or Monmouth Youth or however we want, if we wanted to expand that. But I would, I would probably just keep it simple as far as encompassing what Counselor Carey is trying to to say.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. I mean, for one thing, if you say WU as an underserved community, and certainly there are plenty of individuals and levels of individuals at the university who we would not consider underserved members of our community, but they are folks with whom we've not had as much intentional outreach as we would have liked. And so perhaps, you know, as long as we're making that clear, when it, when it says we are reaching out to the community who have not traditionally been heard, reach out, listen to WU, I think we we all know that means really just getting that whole campus engaged, more engaged in civic instances. So not sure how to word that, John, but.
So, so just adding the S to what Rebecca said and saying WU communities, and the idea that we have a lot of different communities on that campus, you know, the, the staff, the faculty, the students, subsets of the staff, you know, we've got, as you mentioned, Madam Mayor, the physical plant, might have a real different perception of something we want to do than the students would. And it's important to reach out and really try to up the communication thread between the city and that institution, our largest employer, and a mighty big footprint.
Okay, I think Marty's nodding so she can move that forward. And if anything else, any other, my only one was, are we saying rebuild City Hall Volunteer Hall or replace? Replace. I think we are using replace and so.
Replace.
Anything else?
One of the things that we'll need to do at some point is, is take some time to make sure that the priorities, the align with the or the business, the economic development piece that we talked about early, that aligns with these priorities. When we get to the climate piece, that there's some consistent language there that, so it looks like an integrated deal rather than fragmented. But that can be done post facto.
Great, thank you. And Counselor Salinas Oliveros?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Are we ready to make a motion to approve the council priorities?
We are.
Okay, I've moved to adopt the council priorities for the 2021, 22 year.
I seconded.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Salinas Oliveros and Counselor McKeel, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, I think we got it. So thank you for that. And we'll, at least we can officially say we've got those moving forward towards budgets. So, and again, if we can take a few minutes and talk through the current iteration of our value statements, and hopefully maybe again, continue to refine these, I'd appreciate those comments or input. I, the only thing I wanted to say, I want to make sure that our starting statements, because we, we have a couple of different, so we say the Monmouth City Council values this, and in others, we say we value this. So I really wanted to get the temperature of everyone to say, are we setting these values for City Council? Are we setting them for the collective we of Monmouth? What's your sense of that? Which way did you see this going, if you had a particular sense of it? So just go ahead and chat for a second. I'm not going to call on you.
Okay, okay. I think we might be a little bit more powerful if we're gonna, if we're using this as a model to guide our work, to really guide our community towards, you know, what we're trying to do in the city. I think we is a little more powerful because it encompasses more than just the council. It encompasses all of us making these efforts and making these strides.
Yeah, thank you, Rebecca. And I would like to agree with that.
John?
It starts out by saying Monmouth City Council Statement of Values, and I think if you say we, the implication is we is, we are, we am the Monmouth City Council. And doesn't necessarily attempt to speak for we, the entire community, because I don't think that really is what this is intended. We would hope the community follows the lead of its leader, elected leadership. But this is our statement. This is us. This is this we applies to us as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I appreciate Rebecca and Carol's comments and Chris about really that, are we setting these values for everyone? And I, and I would argue that I would love, as we move these out, to communicate about them and really do a values and goal-setting process with our community next, right? We've never done, we haven't done that in a long time. We haven't really gone out and been through a true facilitated process. So I saw these as our statements of values guiding the principles in the work we do. And this is really about our work as a council. And in a way, that sets the tone for our staff. That's our job is to set those things specifically for our staff and the work we do. I would love to then move these out and see if we can create value statements for a really broad base of our community. So that's my input. Others?
I would, I would suggest that if we're going to display them as, you know, with the heading Monmouth City Council Statement of Values, then then the we is fine. If they're going to be freestanding in any way, then I, I would suggest that that they be identified as what they are, and that is the goal or the values of the council, because that's with the exception of those that listen in, we really haven't taken the temperature of our, of the remainder. Now, as a council goal, we can certainly, you know, drive that forward. And and to your point, Madam Mayor, at some point, we can, we can work towards that adoption. But to just presume that that we would, you know, sort of from on high, apply these values throughout would be a little, a little tough, I think. Not, you know, it's, it's just a process deal.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm wondering, though, if we say it's, and maybe I just don't understand the partitions of roles, but if we say City Council, then that's just a very limited body. And yet, the city government is also going to encompass this, which is beyond, I think, the City Council. So we might need to be thinking of something broader than putting the council in that, that first statement, Monmouth City Council Statement of Values, because and it's only seven of us versus the city itself.
Marty, do you have thoughts about that?
I have a comment, and it's one that's been made prior. I think one of the counselors in a prior discussion named the way that I view the statement and the, and these statements of values, and that is that as the policymaking body of the city, and also the, you're the folks who hire me and hire everybody else, and, and as the mayor just said, sets the tone for all the work we do, we are, we are taking from your values, direction, advice, and, you know, and, and that we are, we are one city. And so I, I don't think that it is limiting to have a council statement of values because it's going to be our job to carry out and implement the things that reflect these values.
The only, sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
So, thank you, thank you, Marty, for that. The only thing that I would maybe add is that when Oregon State University comes out with a value statement, it's approved by the Board of Trustees, but it's not the OSU Board of Trustees value statement. It's the OSU value statement. And so I don't, so again, I'm not sure, you know, to say it's the City Council, I think, limits it in a way with our expansion of our vision. But after this, my statement, I won't, yeah.
And I'll, I'd like to expand upon what Counselor McKeel just just stated, that, you know, even more so than the Board of Trustees speaking on behalf of the school, we are speaking on behalf of the community, for, quite frankly, better or worse. This, you know, this, this government that we, we, we serve as elected leaders, and this is an elect, a representative democracy, and as the elected local representatives, we do represent the, you know, the, the, the community that we, we are speaking for. And I, I think that there are a lot of times where we take very careful steps. The, that care is important, and it's incumbent upon us to remember that, you know, we, we serve at the will of the community and for the betterment of our community. But with, you know, with that in mind, we do speak for the community. And I, I, I feel that we is that utilizing the term we in this statement makes it a much more powerful, much easier to digest statement. And, and, and I, I believe strongly that we should state we as a council, as a community, you know, et cetera.
So then the question would be to that, would, in your view, it would not say Monmouth City Council Statement of Values at the top? If, if you feel that, I mean, the we, as John said, if these are our statement of values, we is fine. Do you have a concern about calling it the Monmouth City Council Statement of Values?
I have no concern, no concern about that. We, we are writing those values, and I think that, that, that is, that is fine to call them that. In the past, it's always been stated as such. And I, I, yes, I have no concern calling it that.
Yeah, I'm still going to stick to the we as well. I do think that we're setting an example, we're setting an expectation. And if we go back to our voters, they spoke loud and clear at, out of this last election of what they want to see and where they want Monmouth to go. And I think we have that responsibility to encompass that we and to not be shy about setting the expectations, because then we have these to go back on. Then we have these to say, you know what, these are our goals, our values and our guides, and, and we don't, we don't do that here, or we're not going to accept this kind of behavior, or we're not, or we're going to support you because this is who we are. So I, I think it's important that we use the we. The Monmouth City Council Statement of Values, you know, I could live with that. It could say the city of Monmouth, which would make it stronger yet again, that in this city, this is what we value, this is how we're going to support you, this is how we're going to value you. And, and then we work around that, just like Carol was talking about Oregon State, Chameca is the same way. And there's the values, the goals, the statements, the missions. It all encompasses what we expect from our faculty, our staff and our students to create an environment for everybody. And I think that's what we're trying to do with these statements, and I think we shouldn't be shy about that.
You won me over, Counselor Salinas Oliveros. I said previously that it didn't matter. I now think that it very much does.
The we is fine. So now we're talking about the heading. So I guess we'll have to take a vote. And what I hear are Monmouth City Council Statement of Values, guiding, guiding principles for the work we do, or the City of Monmouth Statement of Values, guiding principles for the work we do. So I guess kind of have to take a vote there and see where that lands. So Monmouth City Council Statement of Values, raise your hands.
A question, on the, on the City of Monmouth, proper name or is it descriptive term? In other words, are we talking about the, all that is the City of Monmouth, population 10,000 people, or are we talking about the City of Monmouth, the governmental entity of which we are the, the policy board?
I'm guessing if we say the City of Monmouth, then it, it can be interpreted either way. And there's an argument for making that expansive, that we believe the, we believe these statements, we are adopting these statements on behalf of everyone in our community. That, that's one argument, I guess. The other would be that it's really just the, we are setting the tone for ourselves and our staff at this point, and then going out to the community to really figure out the community values separately. John, oh?
I'm really concerned about the idea of telling people what their values are rather than asking them what their values are. I would rather see this be about the government of the City of Monmouth or the City Council of the City of or the city council of the City of Monmouth, rather than trying to suggest that. And I mean, the reality is that while this was an interesting election last time with Carol Rebecca and I elected the council, the three of us got fewer votes in aggregate total than the six more conservative candidates did. And, and this community is very evenly split between liberals and conservatives. And I want to make sure that we're not telling half the community what they believe, because I'm not sure that we're there yet. I would love us to get there. I would love to have more people supportive of these, but for now, this is us, this is our work. These are our goals, these are our statements of values. And what we're saying is we value this stuff. And we would like to see our city staff move this stuff forward and make this stuff happen. But I really hesitate to try to apply it to all 10,000 Monmouthians.
We're not telling people what to think or what to value. We are sharing, we are setting the example, and we must take the lead. Otherwise, John, Counsel, Counselor Obers, we won't get there. So we have to take this lead in order to get there. We can't, we can't tell people this is what you have to believe in. We can't do that, regardless of what we say in the statement. But I think as City of Monmouth, it makes people think and pause. They don't have to agree, but eventually, hopefully, they understand where we're going and what we're trying to do.
Concur, 100%. I just want to make cautious, be cautious that we don't phrase this in a way that it can be perceived as that we're stating, this is what the people of the City of Monmouth believe, because I don't think we're there yet.
We're, no, we're not saying the people, we're saying City of Monmouth. Oh, Carol, go ahead.
No, actually, Rebecca, go ahead, because you nailed it better than I had in my head. So we're not saying that every single person in Monmouth has this value statement. We're saying as a city that we do.
I think we agree, Rebecca. I think we're on the same page.
Excuse me, Counselor Obers, excuse me, Counselor Obers, but I am still talking. But we, what we do have in, in, in these is a concern about our fellow neighbors and human beings. And I don't know that that's a political, I don't know that that's a political line of progressives and conservatives. It's a concern about people.
I agree.
All right, so I think Counselor Carrie, the answer would be at this point, we, the City of Monmouth, meaning the leadership of the City of Monmouth and the values we're pushing forward to our staff to conduct business on behalf of the people of Monmouth is, is what we're talking about, rather than saying this is speaking for all, every 10,000 people. All right, so I think with that understanding, if we say the City of Monmouth, and we all understand that's where we are right now on behalf of the City of Monmouth, of the, we want this, the leadership says this is our, these are our values and the way we will conduct the work. So we're good with that? All right, we're moving that forward. Of course, we have another guest with us tonight, so I hate, I feel like I'm torn between really spending our time again wordsmithing and, and getting to the other business we have. Are there just general thoughts about the statements of values that people can share generally? Carol, Counselor McKeel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And actually, I was a bit confused what you said. Is it, is the new title going to be City of Monmouth Statement of Values?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Also, generally speaking about the three statements, I think they're very good. I, in general, I don't have anything to change. There's a few wordsmithing things that I was going to offer to Madam City Manager, but I don't know that I need to use up time on this. It was like an and here and a comma there.
Yeah, that's good. Maybe we can each go back individually and, oh, you know, would we probably could do that, could have done that before the meeting if each of us had taken time to give more individual comments. Maybe we can take that step again and do the individual feedback to her. Would that be, okay, Marty, do you mind?
I, I'm happy to, yes, happy to collect feedback.
Take another run at the, either the tightening up or, or something.
Yeah, whatever suggestions the council has. If you can just either call me or send them into me, and I'll, I'll, I'll create a new draft.
I think we're getting there, right? I think one of the things I noticed, I remember us talking about really the punch and the power of, you know, a two sentences, three sentences, and then maybe four or five sentences. And, and some of them, we're getting there, and some of them, we need to, to tighten a bit to make that really powerful progression, rhetorically speaking. So if folks can look at it with an eye towards that, that's helpful as well. Yes, Counselor McKeel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, and I think that's what's done very nicely here. I'm, I'm, I was looking at things like under the outreach statement, there's a get the word out for information versus inform our residents. So I mean, it's just tightening up some of the phrasing, but not, I, I think the, the overall organization is, is great. It's just more like literally wordsmithing.
Right, there's your task, everyone. If you can take that forward and get those back in, Marty, we will, we will take some individual time with these, make sure we really feel that they are the words we need. So thanks, appreciate that. Let's go ahead and quickly do our reports for this evening. And I will start by saying I don't have much to report in the mayor's report. My only thing I want to mention, that many of you may have heard that today, the governor announced that Polk County would be moving back. And we don't know if it's up or down, right? We are moving back into a, a more unfortunate, higher risk level. That would have normally happened this Friday. That would have restricted businesses again. And because of a new system, we have two weeks as a county to try to reverse what has been an alarming raise in our case rates and our positivity rates and hospitalizations. If we can get this back under control, we will not have to face those further restrictions. But as someone who tracks our COVID numbers on a weekly basis for the school district, the very predictable rise in cases from as things have opened up, as we've had spring break, and as new variants are coming into our community, there was an alarming increase in this last two week period. So I'm going to urge everyone to continue to really follow these protocols. The masks, the hand washing and the distancing, because that's the only way we can continue the progress towards more openness that we were headed for, frankly. And I'm very, very disappointed to, to see the numbers and to see the personal toll that takes. The high school sports had finally gotten going, and they've had to close down the, two teams had to miss their last couple of games because of positive COVID cases of students. And that's an unfortunate byproduct, and it really, just a little more diligence will get us through this. So that's all I have tonight. And reports of council representatives of boards and commissions. I'm sorry for the late timing on this, but we have narrowed down multiple applications we received for planning commission. And we do have that one spot open. Counselor Selena Soliveros and I were able to review applications and really appreciate the quality of folks that stepped forward. Tonight, I would like to recommend that you approve the appointment of Tom Burkeholder. Tom has been in the community for not, not a long time. I think he's been here for about five or six years. But he actually, prior to this, lived in Lake County and was on the Lake County Planning Commission and a chair of that planning commission as well. So very experienced in the land use and planning laws of Oregon, but from a very different standpoint, a very small, remote rural county. So I would entertain a motion to appoint Tom Burkeholder to the planning commission.
So moved.
Second. Unless, unless Counselor Selena Soliveros would like to do the others.
No, we'll let you have it, Counselor McKeel, thank you.
Discussion, or there are other applicants? Don't, don't we have an applicant pool? And was this one in the applicant pool?
Yes, we did. We had actually four applicants for the opening, and so we reviewed those and rated those. Some of those folks also had applied to various other boards and commissions and were appointed to those. And so we kind of had two candidates that we felt pretty strongly about, and then have offered this, would, would like to consider Count, Mr. Burkeholder for that.
And we got that information five minutes before the meeting began?
Yeah, sorry, that was my fault. I forgot to have Phyllis send it back out to you, I apologize.
And Counselor Carrie, this was Mr. Polk Harter, Burkeholder's first choice. And there weren't very many of those on the applications. There were many other choices put down.
All right, seeing no other discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I'm, thank you. And opposed? All right, we will fill up that planning commission again. Do we have some other reports of boards and commissions?
The planning commission meets tomorrow night. The topic will be, one of the topics will be that that we refer to them relative to the, the offset setbacks rather than different lots, as we have asked them to do, 7 o'clock.
Great, thanks. The other boards meet?
The historic commission meets tomorrow at 6 o'clock.
Okay. Look forward to getting some.
Maybe some, maybe some information coming forward. Stevie Reed passed away this week. And I think everyone, most everyone knows who Stevie was. And I think there may be a movement, and I'm, I'm going to be talking to some of the people that are sort of behind it, that they may like to work a bench or memorial bench or something like that. I don't know exactly all that's going on, but, but that, there will be something coming forward. He's an icon in this town. Just anyway, FYI.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. I think that would be great to have a sort of a public place and certainly something that we could consider. Thanks, John. All right, that takes us to the city manager's report. So Marty, why?
Thanks. But Mayor and Council, I just have one item to update you about. I sent a message to you earlier today about our sewer system that was affected by fuel or, and/or odor release. And just wanted to follow up and let you know a little bit more information. We, we've been working with the fire district since last week when they got a call for, of an odor of gasoline coming. It located on one of the buildings on basically the intersection of Main Street and 99W. And we've been trying to figure out what's going on with our sewer collection system. And it, and so working together with the fire district who notified us about their call and our investigation, we noticed that we had petroleum products in our treatment facility. And we've been trying to identify the source of the leak. We've, and just for everybody's information, we contacted state DEQ and private contractors. We've identified the source as an underground pipe that's at one of our local gas stations. And at this time, the leak has been located and the flow has been stopped. We're working in the next couple of days to make sure that our impacted sewer lines are cleaned. And then the structures that are of concern are going to be reevaluated for vapor and other accumulation after the cleaning is done. So at the moment, we, you know, we looked like we had a pretty busy day and trying to identify sort of what was going on, and we'll keep you posted about how that situation unfolds. And my only other report was about the Polk County and COVID-19 status. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for mentioning that. That's all I have for today.
Great, thank you. All right, and again, any other council comments, activities, events we need to know about? Counselor Obers, and then Counselor Belt.
Would like to make the community aware that there have been sightings of a cougar around the university and around the edges of town. My neighbor's son encountered widely spaced glowing eyeballs in bushes at General Woods Park this past week or so. And I've informed the city manager about this, so she can contact Fish and Wildlife and see if there's anything to be done. My guess is, is probably just keep your pets in at night and take care. The only other thing I'd like to mention is we do have a political action committee, which is pushing for the construction of a new city hall, council chambers and courtroom. I am one of the principals in that political action committee. If there's anybody out there who would either like to donate funds or footwork to help with our doorbell ringing campaign, please contact me, I am in the Polk County phone book. Or you can call my cell at 503-917-1702. And let me know that you would like to participate in this. And remind council that as you meet with your boards and commissions, you have an opportunity to reach out to those folks and just let them know that this PAC exists. And if they have any interest in helping out, so please get hold of me. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor Belt.
I just want to remind everybody that the Monmouth Independence Chamber of Commerce, their silent auction is coming up. You can go to their website, which is micc-or.org, register. It starts April 18th, runs through April 23rd. And then there's an, a lot, there's a live event April 23rd. There are weekend getaway packages, golf packages, food and beverage, and most importantly, an original painting that my husband has done that we donated. So, thank you.
Great, yep, good reminder. They, they will definitely be good to get back to our community awards, even if one more year of remote is necessary. But thanks, Chamber, for your work on that. All right, if that is all, sleep, Counselor Selena Soliveros.
Yes, just really quick, just want to make the council aware that Counselor McKeel and I are looking at commemorating the death of George Floyd on May 25th. We have nothing set in stone. We're looking at a very short program just to bring community together and have some time together and maybe some presentations. So I wanted you to make, just to make you aware of that. And then I don't know if Counselor McKeel wanted to talk about real briefly of the conversations on race that, that her and I are putting together. We had one last weekend. It's a four-part series. It's open to the public, and it's just a nice time to come together and learn and, and have some conversations together.
Yeah, great, thanks. All right, at this point, I will go ahead and we will temporarily adjourn the council meeting. And I would like to call to order the meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency. We have a brief bit of business for that before we return to the council meeting and our executive session. I will just announce the executive session tonight for the council is for the purpose of discussing consultation with legal counsel. And that session will be held pursuant to ORS 192662. And that session will be held pursuant to ORS 192662H, um, which allows the council to meet an executive session. Designated staff shall be allowed to attend. All other members of the audience would be asked to leave the room or the call. No decision will be made in executive session. And at the end, we would return to open session, um, to welcome folks back. But it is not anticipated that any action will be taken this evening after our executive session. So we will temporarily adjourn and move to convene the Monmouth Urban Renewal Agency for this meeting of Tuesday, April 6th. And we have a roll call. Please, Phyllis. Ms. Belt?
Here.
Mr. Carrie?
Here.
Mr. Lopez?
Here.
Ms. McKeel?
Here.
Mr. Oberst?
Here.
Ms. Selena Soliveros?
Here.
And Ms. Koontz? I am present. And did we receive any public comment for the Urban Renewal Agency? We did not. Well, thank you. There's no one here. So we'll move forward to the consent calendar, the minutes of our last agency meeting, which were, uh, was held on January 19th. And unless there are corrections or additions to that, we'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the Urban Renewal District.
Oh, second?
Thank you, Ms. Selena Soliveros and Dr. McKeel. And all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed? Great, thanks. All right, one order of business this evening. And Marty?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, board members. Um, I'm, I brought you tonight a status report, which, um, we are committed to bringing you quarterly to just let you know what's going on with the capital improvement program for the Urban Renewal District. We, we wanted to make sure that you had a progress report about, um, what's going on with the projects in the program for, for the, the agency. And we wanted to make sure that you, um, knew what we had been working on to sort of get this capital improvement program, um, organized. We're not asking for any action from you tonight. Um, but what we've tried to do since you last saw a report in September was to align our funding, uh, our, our funding, sorry, our funding sources with, um, the projects. And we've made, done some clarification, um, to understand what eligible funding exists for which projects. And so, really, what we wanted to do tonight was just provide you with this report of the projects that are still on the docket for our, for the capital improvement program. As you know, there are multiple city departments, including Power, uh, Power and Light, Public Works, and our Community Development Department, who, um, make up the, the projects that are in our CIP program. And last fall, we developed the five-year CIP with the idea that we wanted to maximize the bonded indebtedness of the district before the plan expired in 2025. And also, last fall, the board and the council, um, together, made, made, made the decision to devote some urban renewal funding to the City Hall project. And so what you see tonight in the report that we're submitting to you reflects the, the balance of the spending as it's been realigned to support that project. We also obtained a bank loan to finance projects that are in the program. And so what we've tried to do, as I mentioned earlier, is align the, what is eligible for bank loan financing together with, um, and, and also with the projects that are eligible for tax increment financing. So, um, I won't go into great detail in, as to what's in the staff report, except to say that, um, that our staff from all of our departments are here tonight to share with you, um, the status of these projects. And if there's anything that you are curious about, there are some projects that have, that because of the choice to align funding toward the City Hall project, and also because we got clarification about the appropriate use of bank financing and also tax increment financing, which must be used inside the Urban Renewal District, we've had some projects that have, um, that have now come in and become eligible for this funding, and also some that have come off the list. So really, this is just a status report to let you know, um, what's going on with each of the projects. And I'd invite your questions or anything that you're curious about.
Anybody, I know, uh, we had some major, uh, public works projects that we had hoped to use urban renewal funding for. And I see that some of those are off the list just because their physical location, although obviously, they will serve the city and they will serve the Urban Renewal District. But that sort of, uh, finessed information about what can be funded has changed some of those priorities, so. All right, I'm not seeing any questions or comments.
And you'll be seeing us quarterly. We'll try to keep you up to date about what's going on with the projects. So hopefully, we'll make a regular habit of letting you know how it's going.
And we do have some strategic planning to do as a board to determine the future. But, uh, well, we'll be doing that in the future, so. Unless there's any other business before the Urban Renewal Agency, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move adjourn.
And thank you, Mr. Carrie. Uh, we don't need a second for that, so all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I don't see any opposed. So the Urban Renewal Agency is adjourned. And we return to the Monmouth City Council meeting. And at this point, we will move into executive session. So we will take a moment, um, to allow those who are on the call, who are not involved in this discussion issue, to leave.